Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for attending tonight's city council meeting. We have a special presentation this night from the City of Peace Committee. So I'd invite them all to come up. I think they have a nice presentation for us. So that's how we're gonna start this evening. We'll have it face the audience. And then we can show it to council after. I'll hold the other end if you'd like to hold this. Thank you. So this is a collaboration with, from all the kids at last year's UN Peace Day. They drew what peace means to them. And so they took a, obviously, they took their own hands and cut it out, and then drew what peace looks like to them. And then they would, they explained each of their drawings. This was from last year, so they may not remember. But do you wanna share what peace means, looks like to you? Do either of you wanna share that? You don't have to if you don't want to. Angela Lee, you want to?
They've actually forgot which one they drew.
That one and that one. Oh, my goodness.
I don't know which one.
Oh, well, they're all so pretty. Do you remember which one yours was?
Yes.
That one, oh, that's gorgeous. Why did you wanna make the heart in the middle? Was there a reason? See, because you can be kind to others? I think that is a great reason to put a heart in the center of your hand. That's wonderful. And you can see some of the other artwork on here, too. They have peace and peace symbols and more hearts in the middle of the hand. So this is just a wonderful, wonderful drawing. And it's perfect that it's your little hand. Does your hand still fit? What do you think? Is your hand still that fit, that small? Let's see. Should I hold you upside down to find out? No, are you sure? Did that hurt? No, but I think that was probably yours. Well, I think that one is awesome. And I think yours is gorgeous, too. And like, I, perfect. That has to be yours.
So we, we have somebody named Kelly at our Heartfulness Center that put them all together and created this canvas. And in the center, it says, "Love All, Hurt None", which is a saying by Dodgy, the head of the Heartfulness Institute. And so that is the quote he gave us for our Peace Day last year. So we went ahead and put that in the center. And we would like to present this to the city council to perhaps hang here as a reminder of peace in our city.
Well, we think this is wonderful. And we are so grateful to have you here, the Heartfulness Institute. You've been here a few times now. You came and talked about mindful meditation last year. You made a branding at the Heartfulness. You gave me a break-up tree from last year. So we're happy to be going through that. And this is just a beautiful piece of artwork that we would love to keep here. I think this quote is fantastic. I know Julie has done a lot with the City of Peace as well, trying to bring that to, we're now a City of Peace in Beaver Creek.
Well, they've got a report. We've been in existence, the exploratory committee's been in existence for four or five months. And so we've got a report that's been passed out to people. And Angela Lee is gonna breeze through that and give you an update on our accomplishments.
Yeah, I can do that right now. So, so this has been really a great brainchild of Julie's. And I've been honored and happy to work on it with her. And she's pulled in a lot of different members from the community. And so we've all been meeting together. The Beaver Creek Library and Nancy Madden is here. Yay! She's done a great job of implementing three projects. There's a story walk trail at Laffino Park. And the signposts are posted along a trail. And parents and children can walk the trail and talk about the book of the month. And they selected the peace book as their, as their book for, in honor of UN Peace Day this month. And let's see. One of the literary peace prize books will be the focus of a group discussion on September 19th from 6:30 to 7:30. It's called "Salt Houses" by Ala Alian. And other peace-related books will be on display. Oh, she's holding it up for us. Hi. Then the Heartfulness Institute, our meditation center, we work to promote meditation and inner peace for people throughout the region. We have two meditation centers in Beaver Creek. Our main one is on Lance Road. There's about seven acres there. And we have another one at the mall at Fairfield Commons. And we offer meditation classes free of charge to the community to help people have tools for balance and well-being. And so we are open every day of the week, actually, between both locations. So people can stop in and get a free meditation session. We also have a lot of onsite group sessions that we do throughout the Miami Valley. We have over 35 that we do in, you know, in Beaver Creek, but also much beyond Beaver Creek into Dayton, even in Tip City and Troy and Centerville, Montgomery County, Miami Valley Hospital, and many other locations throughout Dayton area. We have a Heartful Schools program that's designed to offer teachers, counselors, and school-based therapists self-care techniques and empower them with tools to care for the students. This course was just provided this last Saturday to 43 school teachers. And this was after the tornado, obviously. So we also had the Seeds of Peace Kids, which are some inner-city kids that normally wouldn't have anything constructive to do. We had them come in July to our meditation center to teach them relaxation, breathing, meditation, and yoga techniques to help, give them something to balance themselves and calm themselves and alleviate any fear and anxiety. And that, and they really, they stole my heart when they came. They were amazing kids. We also have an app called the Heart Bat, Heart Bot, excuse me. And that was introduced to the Beaver Creek teachers at the Heartful Schools program to share with students. It's a great free app that you can download that has great tools designed to reduce stress, improve focus, and develop heart-centered qualities. It's especially useful to students who've experienced trauma and stress. And then finally, the Heartfulness Institute has also done a class for medical professionals, offering continuing education credits for physicians, nurses, social workers. And we, we have offered that in the past and are planning to do again in the future. The IRV, the Natural Health Center, hosted a trauma relief session for Beaver Creek victims after the tornado. Many faith community institutions in Beaver Creek have attended a meeting or two of our Peace Committee. Church leaders have stated their willingness to participate in a future panel to explore the similarities and better understanding of the various religions. So we're still working on that. Prayer sessions were offered after the Oregon District shootings and after the tornado in multiple churches, mosques, and temples, organized aid to tornado neighborhood victims and would share those efforts when they visited the City of Peace meetings. We have a great representative of the Beaver Creek Girl Scouts, Susan. She's planned a peace art project for the 2019 Art Festival to be held September 15th at Art Fest and has lots of creative ideas of how to interweave peace into their troops. Beaver Creek schools have participated to some extent, but specific plans were delayed because of the timing, the summer break, and the tornado. But they're, they have a representative on the committee and have future plans to do something with us with peace. And then a subcommittee has worked together to plan the second annual Peace Day in Beaver Creek. This is so much fun. So if you guys can come. We have a peace walk that we do on Dayton Senior Road with world flags and peace signs from the Beaver Creek High School to the Heartfulness Center. And our first year doing that was last year. This is definitely Julie's, Julie's brainchild. It was so much fun as people drove by and honked for peace. It was really fun. So if you guys can come, it's a fun walk. It's gonna be a beautiful day. We're doing that Saturday, September 21st. And the program is after we do the walk, which starts at 1:30. At 2:15, we'll be at the Heartfulness Center where we will have walked to. And we're gonna plant a generous donation of cherry blossom trees donated by Mr. Alex Hara. He's the executive director of JP Morgan Bank, but personally, he has a vision for donating cherry blossom trees. He's already donated 1,000 to the Dayton area and is now an Operation 2000, and all as a measure of peace and to promote peace. So we'll plant a cherry blossom tree. And then we'll have children begin their peace activity for this year, which will be in the Japanese theme of origami and peace cranes. And we'll have welcome, Julie's gonna share updates about the Peace Committee. And Bob, Mayor Bob Stone, will be there to do a proclamation for Peace Day. We'll also have introduction of some other leaders. We'll have keynote speaker Chris Borland, who is a former NFL player, who's going to be talking about his research on the brain and also the benefits of meditation. And we're really excited that he made time to come and participate in our Peace Day. He was a former linebacker for the San Francisco 49ers. And left that field because of his aversion to concussions and his passion about, you know, changing football in that way because of these brain injuries. So he's gonna talk about the benefits of meditation in that light. We'll also do a meditation, so you'll have an experience of it. And then the children will share their project. And we'll have some refreshments donated by Fresh Time and some other refreshments as well. So we hope you can come. It's from 1:30 to 5:00. The current City of Peace Committee members, they're varied from different sectors. So we have Sherrell Appeland, who's a physician. We have Julie Bowen, who's a brighter minds instructor and heartfulness trainer.
Raise your hand.
Yeah, you can raise your hand. Myself, who owns the IRV, the National Health Center, and I'm a heartfulness trainer. Mr. Delphany Gordon, who's a pastor at the Seventh-day Adventist Church. Susan Grinklemeyer, the Girl Scouts head of Beaver Creek North. Nancy Madden, yay, head librarian of the Beaver Creek Library. Suman Medharada, who's a retired teacher and heartfulness trainer. Uma Malapuri, raise your hand, heartfulness trainer. Susan Pavelar, who's a principal at Shaw Elementary. Kuldi Pratthan, representing the Beaver Creek Seek Temple. Manoj Kumar, from the Hindu Community Organization, Beaver Creek Board member. And then Julie Van, our fearless leader, Beaver Creek City Council and Friendship Forest Dayton leader. So hopefully, that wasn't too long. But we really appreciate you all having us and accepting our peace art. And we hope you can all join us for Peace Day.
Thank you so much. And on behalf of myself and council and Mayor Stone, we are more than happy to accept this artwork, this beautiful piece of artwork here, to instill peace in our city. And thank you for the update on the City of Peace. I know that that's been a lot of work for everyone. So thank you to everybody who's on that committee, especially to those here in the audience. We're very happy to have you here tonight, and we thank you for coming. So with that, I think we are ready to start our meeting. So thank you again so much, all, for being here tonight.
Thank you all for coming.
Okay, so I will now call this meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Little.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Stone.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Mayor Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I will now turn the meeting over to Councilmember Little for the pledge.
If we could, if we could please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. And if we could just take a brief moment as September 11th approaches us and remember all of the sacrifices that were made that day and those days afterward as we continue to help and work to unite people together and to bring peace to those that were affected by such a great tragedy in our, in our world. Thank you. Please be seated.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us this evening.
Seeing no changes, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ordinances, resolutions, and QUDs.
This is ordinance 1916, a third reading, to establish a new special revenue fund and fiduciary fund in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles.
This was sponsored by Councilmember Van. Is there anything further that you'd like to discuss this evening?
If there's no further discussion, I would move for approval of ordinance 19-16.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 19-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Ordinance 19-19.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1st and ending December 31st, 2019, and to amend ordinances 18-28, 19-1, 19-3, 19-12, 19-17, and 19-18.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. We are requesting approval of supplemental appropriations and certification of additional revenue as follows. In 2018, the Street Levy Fund received grant funding from the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission to purchase right-of-way for the Shakertown Road construction project. The right-of-way purchases came in $220,000 under budget. So MVRPC did give approval for the city to apply the remaining $222,000 to the construction phase of the project. These additional funds have the effect of reducing the city's local share on the project. Therefore, the city needs to certify these additional grant revenues as pass-through grant revenue for the Street Levy Fund. Secondly, to help cover the cost of tornado debris removal, the city decided to delay resurfacing of additional streets that are normally added to the annual base street program. This will allow the city to release and redirect $351,000 for emergency debris removal. Although these funds are available for use on a cash basis, on a budgetary basis, they must be unappropriated. Therefore, the amount of $351,000 needs to be unappropriated in the street maintenance fund. And then lastly, due to the tornado, the golf course sustained damage to the roof of the maintenance facility as well as the small training and fitting building next to the driving range. Repairs will be covered by our property liability insurance through Miami Valley Risk Management Association. Even though these funds are paid directly to the vendor, the Ohio Revised Code requires that this transaction be recorded through our financial accounting system, much like pass-through grants. Therefore, the city must appropriate $38,606 for roof repairs and certify revenue for the same amount in the golf course fund. So staff is recommending adoption of ordinance 19-19.
Thank you very much. Is there any input from council?
Motion to approve the ordinance 19-19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-19. All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's even written on here that it is a roll call. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Little.
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing.
Yes.
Councilmember Upton.
Yes.
Councilmember Van.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you very much. Ordinance passes. Now we will move on to liquor permits. I think Captain Fiorita has one for us this evening.
Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. We received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control police notification of a request to transfer a D1, D2, D3, and D6 liquor permit from Brinker Restaurant Corporation Doing Business As Chili's Bar and Grill at 2762 North Fairfield Road in Beaver Creek, Ohio, to ERJ Dining the Fourth Limited License Corporation Doing Business As Chili's Bar and Grill at the same location. The background checks required by the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, were conducted on the business officers and shareholders for this application request, and there were no issues there. Staff recommendation is to recommend this application remove forward, move forward without comment.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Brinker Restaurant Corp. Doing Business As Chili's Bar and Grill. I'd like to make a motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and accept, and a second to accept without comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Thanks, Captain. All right, now we'll move on to council time. We will start this evening with Councilmember Curran.
Congratulations to the popcorn committee.
Yes.
My goodness, what a crowd Saturday. What a crowd Sunday. Blessed with good weather. And it was really a good time by all. Tremendous. Congratulations.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to second those thoughts. Thanks to the popcorn festival and the committee itself for putting it on and hosting such a wonderful event. It's amazing that it continues to grow year after year into different parts of the, of the area and the community as a whole. It's wonderful to see and certainly a gem for our community. One other thing I wanted to mention tonight. City manager kinda stole a little bit of my thunder in the earlier email.
Thunder? Oh, the MVRPC.
The MVRPC has, has awarded the city of Beaver Creek over $3 million in grants for a couple of road projects over the next few years, impacting North Fairfield, some widening projects and curbs and sewers, or curbs and side paths and some other, other parts. But bottom line is our staff put in an excellent grant. I requested the right amount of money, and we were able to win those. They were approved last Thursday, I believe it was, that Thursday morning. So we should hopefully get that sometime soon and start the project. So thanks to the staff, again, for putting that forward. And, you know, one more thing that, glad to be partner with the MVRPC on to get some of those dollars. I remember when we were going over that particular portion of the budget on Thursday's meeting, there were three projects that were awarded money, and two of them were to Beaver Creek. So very, very pleased and honored to be there to represent and to say aye when it came time to pass it. That's all for me tonight.
That's a pretty good update for the night, though. Thank you very much. Councilmember Van?
I went to, I'm assigned to go to the Miami Valley, or the Green County Cats meetings, and I went. They are one of the very few bus systems in the state of Ohio that doesn't have tax money or a levy that supports them. So that was part of their struggle is how could they maintain the quality of program they want without revenue like most of the other departments? No decisions were made. It was an interesting discussion. We don't have a vote on that. I don't have a vote. We don't have a vote on that committee. We're just bystanders that sit there. So it was interesting, and that was good. I did attend the Miami Valley Regional Planning meeting that they announced that they would be coordinating all the disaster capital improvement grant writing for tornado neighborhoods and cities. And Pete was there and quite a few staff people, and Mayor Stone was there. It is really, we, not all places in the United States have such a strong regional planning organization as Miami Valley Regional Planning. So we're pretty darn lucky. And they have stepped up to the plate and are hiring somebody to write grant applications for the region, which makes them a stronger ask when they're solving problems throughout the region. So glad we're a partner, glad that, that Pete's paying attention and we're doing this. I think it's good for the community and good for the tornado recovery. I think that by having somebody specifically hired to do that, it really is, is to all of our benefits. Terrific. I didn't know whether to bring it up tonight, but I, but I will because the, I, I've worked, my job has been to help neighborhoods recover from whatever or to watch people recover from whatever. And to recover from this tornado is, is challenging. If you read the, the blog where people are, are talking about the different things that are happening as they fight with insurance or they get let down because a bad tree cutter has run away with their money or whatever miscellaneous stuff has gone on. I wonder if we, as a city, in Kettering, when I worked in Kettering, they hired a person using grant money to be an advocate for seniors in, in Kettering and to answer questions about which kind of insurance, about what to do when they needed to make decisions about housing or health or, or whatever. And the council was kinda cautious about hiring that person. But after having it paid for with Community Development Block grant for two years, they've permanently added that person onto their staff because it's so valuable to their citizens to have that advocate at City Hall who doesn't really solve their problems. But for a person that's in crisis, it's nice to have a staff person from City Hall who will help you negotiate through the, the social service agencies. I wanna know, I know that Green County Community Foundation has $400,000 that they have not earmarked for how it's gonna be distributed. I wanna know if, if our council would be willing to hire, part-time or full-time, you guys can help me decide, an advocate that would work at City Hall and be a resource for people that were affected by the tornado who need somebody that isn't in crisis to help them sort through the various paths. Pete and I talked about this briefly before we came in here. And we talked about putting it on the agenda for October, but that's so far away. I thought, I'm just gonna bring it up. But I just think it would be, that right now, they can call 211 and then get somebody in Montgomery County who will be their advocate, whatever that means. But how much better it would be if they could call Beaver Creek City Hall, who can coordinate with that person at, at 211? I mean, and, and all the agencies in Green County and figure out how to help them solve. So I'm asking if, if we should put together as a city council a request for some of that money that Green County Community Foundation has secured for the tornado and see if that would be a purposeful use of it that would help a lot of families. Just throwing it out there for your discussion. I mean, it's something we would just, if you say that I should move forward, then I will just think through it, and Pete will think through it, and we'll see what it might be. And the animal might come back. The project proposal might come back. I don't even know if it's a possibility.
Shouldn't the manager do that, though? He's the chief executive officer.
I'm just saying.
That it would be his responsibility to evaluate it, council member. And, 'cause that, long-term, would fit into the, it would be a financial possibility that we'd have to assume.
And we, as a group, can make that choice and direct him to do that. I'm just telling you that there's a win.
You know, I'd be in favor of asking the manager to look at it.
A window of opportunity, and, and maybe we should, maybe we should do it. It could be an ombudsman. It could be whatever we wanna call it. But if we could start working on it, I, I think, I think there potentially is some grant money. We might have to match it with something. But we might be able to provide an office or provide, I mean, whatever.
Yeah, it's an interesting thought. Two questions in the mind. Do we have the, the need, the bandwidth? So warranted?
Yeah, I think, I think there's people out there who, I mean, some, the people who are capable of solving their own problems have already done, and are doing it. And, and those that aren't are still just in crisis and struggling.
Yeah. The other thought I have around that is, you know, once we get through the crisis, the tornado recovery, is there a need beyond that? Right? You mentioned Kettering with some of the, the things they have. What's that person doing today that I guess is a void? You know, what's, what are we missing?
Yeah, she, she, 'cause her focus is on seniors. And so it's seniors who are just doing the best they can in their house.
Sure.
They're really confined to their house.
Yeah.
And they just need help figuring out different solutions. I mean, just, it's, she's got a, a list of, I don't know how many clients anymore because I haven't been there for a while, but a huge, huge list of clients.
Yeah, certainly see the potential in that.
Anyway, for, for, I, I think for a short term, I would focus it on tornado.
Sure, absolutely.
And then at a future, future time, we can think about other stuff.
Yeah.
But for, for today, I would like to focus it. And if, if you're, I don't know if we can do this at this point in the meeting. Can I make a motion?
You could.
I would make a motion that we ask the city manager to explore the possibility of having a, a person on our staff that can be an advocate for our citizens who have survived the tornado, for now.
With specifics.
And then the specifics of whether it's.
Relating to the tornado incident.
And whether it's full-time, part-time, whatever. Those are for him to figure. And whether it's full-time, part-time, whatever, those are for him to figure out because he's the, the executive administrator. I'm just putting, let's figure, let's have an idea.
I think we should wait till the mayor gets back.
I'd second that motion.
The mayor comes back and then we're all together.
Second Julie's motion?
And we can talk about that, but not right now.
Well, I, I have a motion and a second.
Mm-hmm.
For Julie's motion to have, as I understand it, just have the city manager explore the possibility of bringing somebody on and then present council with further options as far as part-time, full-time, even if it's-
If we can get a grant for it.
If we can get a grant for it, whatever. So right now, we're, the motion and the second is just to have the city manager explore this possibility.
Correct, yeah. You can't have another, another law.
Right, no, absolutely. Right. So that's, that's the motion as is. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
No.
Okay. Do I have, uh, anyone in, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. So we'll have, uh, Pete, take a look into that and see what's available, what the interest would be, and bring back to council what you find out. Anything else?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Kudos, um, to join fellow council members on the Popcorn Fest. Seems like every year, um, it gets bigger and bigger. Um, like to see, uh, what they project the, uh, the attendance to be. Um, but it was always a, a great sight to see down that North Fairfield stretch. I saw a picture, uh, from the mayor looking out on the, uh, fire truck. Um, it's always, you know,
It was good.
Always great to see that, um, that presence here in Beaver Creek. So kudos to them. Um, second item is I just want to give a, a shout out and thanks to the Soane Medical Center. Um, just this past week, they had their South Tower topping. It seems like, uh, you know, between, uh, uh, different, um, offices and buildings at Soane, um, they continue to expand and reinvest within our, our great community. So kudos to them. Do you also want to bring to the, uh, viewing, uh, attention is that, uh, the planning department, as well as the engineering division are now doing online permitting and payments. Uh, that's another great resource, uh, for our residents to expedite, um, and just better access, um, to those, um, different services that we have. Um, so if you, uh, want to review, um, any online permitting or make payments, feel free to do so that online, but always, uh, give the office a call if you need further information. And then, um, just to give, uh, thanks to our City of Peace Committee, uh, especially to Councilmember Van and those who are in attendance. You know, this is a prime example of, you know, we, we get asked to do a lot, whether it be city government, you know, township, school districts, and although we want to serve, this is an opportunity where, you know, residents came together, um, to fill a, a gap, if you will, or perhaps on local government, um, couldn't facilitate that and bring it back to us to further that discussion. So it's a great partnership and, uh, there'd be more to come with that. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Littoral?
Well, I just have a couple of things. Uh, one, wonderful that the Popcorn Festival, uh, was able to bring in the amount of folks that it did. And the other area was that the weather, uh, played a factor. Um, but I really want to thank the tremendous amount of volunteers that staffed and assisted with the Popcorn Festival from the Popcorn Committee. But most importantly, I want to thank the COPPs who every year, uh, really risked their lives with the traffic on North Fairfield. Um, they do a tremendous job and they were out there for four or five hours and they were also on the other end of the Popcorn Festival, the other end of Dayton Xenia. So just want to say thank you to them. They, uh, truly are service above self and we have a tremendous team with our COPPs and that's just one of the greatest programs the city has. Not to mention, we have lots of other wonderful volunteers, but you really see, um, during the Fourth of July and, um, at the Popcorn Festival, just how valuable of a resource they are. So I wanted to personally thank them for that. I want to thank Councilmember Upton and Vice, uh, and Councilmember Van for being a part of the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. Um, your work has brought millions of dollars to, um, the city council, uh, who's now former Councilmember Wallace. Um, the fact that you attend those meetings and find out about projects has made a tremendous difference in our city, especially when it comes to our roadways, because without those grant funds, we would not have the roads that we do. So a thank you for going above and beyond and I know it's, in addition to your other duties, um, and your regular, your regular jobs, but it's just a tremendous asset that Miami Valley Regional Planning is to this community. And so I want to thank you both for your service and for the great work that you do on those because again, um, without having an income tax or an earnings tax, you know, those, those grant dollars are just vital to the success of Beaver Creek. So, thank you.
Our staff makes it easy.
They do. We have a wonderful staff, but having, having you attend those meetings and bringing back that information to staff, you know, it's, it's, it's two ways of communication that it makes a difference.
Thank you very much. The only thing that I would add is again, a thank you to the Popcorn Festival and all the volunteers. Again, such a great and wonderful event for the community and thankful, thank you to the Heartfulness Institute who came out today for the City of Peace artwork. I think that's great. The little girls were awesome explaining why they made their handprints painted the way they did, and I think it's a great message for everyone. So with, um, Mayor Stone out, we will skip over the mayor's report and we'll head straight to the city manager's report.
All right, thank you. Coming, uh, very quickly here this week, September 11th, uh, there will be at, uh, 8:30 AM Beaver Creek, uh, this is sponsored every year by Beaver Creek Fire, Professional Firefighters and Beaver Creek Police, FOP. Uh, we gather together there at the 9/11 Memorial, um, to, uh, reflect on the tragic events of 9/11. So there's just a brief moment. Uh, it's been a short, but very nice ceremony every year. I would remind everybody that, uh, parking is at a premium there, so the sooner you get there, the earlier you might be able to get a spot. If not, you might be walking from Frisces or something like that. Uh, but, uh, that, it will be the actual official moment of silence at 8:46 AM. So that is at Beaver Creek Station there at the memorial in front. Last party on the patio. Yes, I know, summer is wrapping up. So the last of the year. Uh, the September 13th, uh, six to nine, live music, modern vintage band. Uh, so come join us at the Beaver Creek Golf, Golf Club. Uh, and there's a, you know, phone number there for more, uh, additional information, but, uh, usually a nice time and send summer out with a blast. Hopefully, uh, I think Friday at night, it's supposed to cool down a little bit, go be 90s this week, but, uh, I think Friday is only high of maybe 85 or something, so. But it is still summer, well, until the 21st, right? Or something like that. 23rd? Okay, so we got a little bit of summer left in us, but come and join us. Uh, I think we've mentioned this piece, uh, day, uh, Saturday, September 21st, uh, 1:30 at Beaver Creek High School, meet there and that's, uh, where they'll pass out flags and walk and start the, uh, process of the multiple things that are going on that day. So that's, uh, Saturday, uh, 21st. And then just want to make you aware of some active projects, uh, on updates. Uh, there's multiple updates. Noel Drive, a storm sewer installation is progressing along. Periodic roadway closures can be expected over the next few weeks. Old Mill Lane Bridge, most people don't even know this exists, but the service is just a couple people, uh, back, uh, they're, they're working on that new portion of the bridge and demolition work will then begin on the eastern half of the bridge. Uh, the curb and resurfacing, which this is affecting a lot of people. Uh, the contractor's made, uh, really good progress on the repaving, so much so that he has to slow down, take a little bit of a break so that the curb work can, uh, get ahead of the game. And then once the curb replacement work is further along, the paving contractor can return and finish this year's program. So we'll finish this up rather quickly. Uh, National Road and at Grange Hall and the Colonel Glenn, uh, just saw that, uh, a couple of days ago, uh, besides some cleanup, uh, it's reopened already and the contractor's just working on completing some final items like some, uh, more seating and final pavement markings and signs. But, uh, traffic is flowing through there and I bet everybody is very thankful for that. That's a, that, uh, that's a good improvement to have at that location. It's just the pain of, uh, the traffic while you're doing the improvement. Uh, Shaker Town Road Extension, I think there was an article in the paper today and in the news on Dayton Daily, um, about, uh, about the Shaker Town and the Super Street. Uh, we are on, in, you know, on target. Uh, we're talking about mid next year, 2020, being complete, but there's still, uh, as far as all the dirt that's been brought in, um, it's now close to the planned grade, so it's getting about right where, uh, the grade is, uh, needing to be. This filling and utility relocation at work is expected to continue over the next couple of weeks. So it's progressing, uh, very nicely.
Can you remind me when that's supposed to be done?
Uh, like June 2020.
2020.
Yeah. We're finishing when the state basically begins. That's, that's, it kind of worked out that way. And then, uh, just as a reminder, future, uh, city meetings, we have the joint, uh, meeting with Beaver Creek School Board on this Thursday, uh, September 12th, uh, at the School Administration Building, um, at, uh, 3040 Kemp Road at 6:30 PM. And then, uh, City of Beaver Creek on our normal, uh, work session on Monday, the 16th is canceled. I think one took place of the other. So, uh, just as a reminder, and so we're not here Monday and Thursday. If you, it is a public meeting at the school board, so if you want to come down to the school board and see the joint session, uh, uh, show up at Kemp Road Administration. That'd be a good time. And that's all I have tonight.
Great.
Other, one, one other thing I just want to say, um, it was a very good honor of Mr. Thonero, uh, Alex Zaharif, uh, from the township, uh, their presentation to the, uh, Beaver Creek Women's League, uh, this past week, uh, last week. And, uh, they were really interested in hearing and we got really great feedback, a lot of conversations after. Uh, you know, it was, uh, I told, uh, Councilmember Van earlier that, uh, most of the time, we've done these presentations a couple of different times and most time you say, well, how many people have been impacted? And there may be a few hands and that's about it. But when we asked this time, Mike asked this time, there were a lot of hands that went up, uh, how many were impacted? And we're like, whoa. Um, so we had a, a lot of people that were impacted by it, but I tell you what, the, uh, just a lot of thank yous, a lot of hugs, uh, appreciated that and just, just a lot of, of thankfulness and I think we all, uh, were very thankful, nobody lost their lives, of course. But thank you for the opportunity to the Women's League, uh, to come out, uh, and speak to you. So, uh, it was our pleasure. And that's all I have.
Great, thanks so much. Uh, at this time in the meeting, we will open it up for citizen comments. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to address council on any issue, you have up to three minutes to speak. Very, very busy room this evening, so. Anyone at all? Okay.